The public meeting is now commencing with this hearing. Item 2538-1, reconstruction of James Weldon Johnson Playground in Manhattan. Let the record show that there are no accusations and no members of the public have signed up to testify. Per standard procedure, the applicants will give their presentation, after which the commission will ask any questions, deliberate, and then vote.
Last presentation you asked about Hillary Silco and the sample, it didn't have samples here. That's not, that's not the whole system.
Okay.
Where's the yellow? Yeah, the yellow was painted lines in the last presentation.
Okay.
And the yellow was thermopenched.
Okay, Helen Faber is going to present our playground in East Harlem. Um, Heather Faber, and I'm looking for a draw from the project. So James Weldon Johnson Playground is a community park, so we should have said, "James Brown." Um, the project goals were to design new zones to increase and upgrade active recreation, to provide a safe, open, and secure multi-use play area for both the community and the school, and provide aspects of this. The budget is 3.14 million in my own funds and five little over a gator. So here's the site in East Harlem. They sell the 115th Street, um, between Third Avenue and Lexington Avenue in the interior of the block, behind the S-57, and next to the James Weldon Johnson offices. Um, this is the land use map, so we are surrounded by residential nature housing, and we're also next to the East Harlem Health Center and the school. The playground is actually a joint-opulent playground with the S-57 and part of the school yard, part of the playground is used as a school yard. We are not in any playgrounds or zones. This is the neighborhood context, so nearby large parks include Sunny Park, Tom Sarcas Park, and Marcus Garvey Park, and our number of small playgrounds nearby. Um, the orange highlights the, um, nine residential super block, and you can see in blue dash lines and yellow figure lines, the system of pedestrian crossings through the site, through the block, and our park lines up with this system of mid-block crossings. This is the 1972 plan. In this plan, the school and the playground are swatched from how it is today. They were both reconstructed in 1965. The school is coming out of Third Avenue, the multi-use play area coming into the interior of the block. This is the existing conditions of the site. This, um, area in blue about lined by a red track is the multi-use play area, and that's the part of the area that's used by the school during the school day. As I said, the site is used as a mid-block crossing. It winds up with a track and light on Lexington Avenue. Existing outside of the multi-use play area is a junior basketball court and a handball court, and there is a play equipment for ages five to twelve. There's also a company camp. There, uh, the tree in terms of the site, there is one tree that's likely to be removed, and three are pending. So here, with the photos, these are the two, um, street frontages, the Lexington and the Third Avenue. This is the main Lexington Avenue entrance on the left, and this is a picture of the interior walkway looking east. Um, this is pictures of the handball court and the basketball courts. This is pictures of inside the multi-use play area that is used by the school. Um, this area was actually redone by the school, um, in the last fifteen years independently from last. So as you can see, there is synthetic turf play area in the multi-use, um, play area. Um, the blue outlines the area that the school uses for the last ten, fifteen years since it went redone. The school has been locking the gates. Public doesn't have access to the space. Um, and, uh, there are two entrances on Lexington Avenue, and there's some, uh, disconnected circulation, and there's a redundant and excessive fencing that's in issue. Um, the playground equipment is outdated and, um, it's only for five to twelve-year-olds. There's a utility quarter running for the site, because this used to be 104 King Street, so it's been demapped. So there's a sewer line and a water main running underneath, and the Lexington Avenue subway runs under the sidewalks. And this gray hat shows areas that are unprogrammed right now where past activities and amenities have been removed or being used. So we had a public scoping meeting where we, with the communities, of collective response, to see what they're most interested in having with the reconstruction. They're most interested in active recreation and specifically amenities for children. So spray showers are important, wood play, but big swings. Then there's also a big basketball contingent in the neighborhood, so we have basketball and other basketball amenities. And they also wanted a little fitness for public health, um, that the health department came in and talked about that. Um, for asset recreation, gaming tables and seating and green space. And in site concerns, providing security and making up a share of the multi-use play area for both the community and the school. So this is the concept plan that we shared in the meeting before we moved forward to the schematic plan. And while we were removing the handball and reorienting the junior basketball, we're proposing full-size basketball court in the multi-use play area and opening up this area for the public after school hours. In the playground, it's much bigger. There's swings, grays, five and five-to-12-year-old equipment, and there's a community seating area for kids. So this is the schematic design for the plan. The whole playground is now organized around one green corridor, and this corridor acts as like a lushly planted hallway that connects five rooms of the playground. So the rooms would be the multi-use play area, the junior basketball, the playground, expanded playground, the community seating area, and adult fitness area. So in the multi-use play area, like I said, we have a full-size basketball court. We're also replacing the track, uh, path for basketball and kickball, and we're introducing a rain garden with canning trees to provide shade on the asphalt. Um, connecting to the multi-use play area, we have the junior basketball court. They are connected with the gate here, and they're the same color, so it's seamless when they're opened to the community, so it's not a problem. And so the junior basketball court would be open to the public all day, twenty-four hours, while the multi-use play area is reserved for the school. So this is the playground layout. The playground is expanded with removal of handball, and the color scheme is vibrant. It brings energy to the spot, it's pretty shaky. Um, we have a motif of circles that animate the ground plane and create new spaces for seating area for caregivers, the spray shower. In the corner, we have a, um, a playhouse area specifically for kids who don't like too much noise. It's sort of long and secluded. Um, we have, uh, a separate units for two to five and five to twelve, and they're able to ride swings. And we also have a curved, um, bridge connects the entryway to the spray shower that is accessible and provides a unique opportunity to experience each and every different experience of the park. Um, in the seating area and in the spray shower, we have radio benches that reinforce the motif of the ground. So this is the type of equipment that we're proposing. It's arch structures that provide lots of different challenges for kids. This is the two-to-five unit. On the two-to-five unit, we have a wheelchair-accessible bridge and a slide, a transfer platform, and that would be the, um, the playhouse. We also have, uh, ground activities that are accessible in both the five-to-12 and the two-to-five. So this is a 3D rendering, um, like panoramic view scanning from the playhouse looking with the two-to-five on the left and the five-to-12 on the right. Spray shower in the corner. So, um, in the other part of the park, we brought the pedestrian walkway down to 10 feet wide, so we're able to provide two new spaces for community seating and for adult fitness. In the community seating area, we are able to surround the space with planting beds to provide a lush, historic environment for community members to enjoy the park. It's in a centralized location, so we have plenty of opportunities for people watching and to feel part of the park community. Connected to that is adult fitness. And the entrance to the adult fitness embraces the existing flagpole. And we have flowering undersory trees flanking the flagpole, providing color and seating elements in sight. In the community seating area, we have gaming tables, drinking fountains, and benches with companion seating, and some permeable papers as a ground. So it'll be a rendering looking east with the community seating area on the right and the multi-use play area on the left. And in the background, um, adults. This is 3D rendering of the adult fitness. This is the permeable paper that we're proposing. It's a Unilock Eucryora permeable paper, and the finish is Umbreano, and the color is Chobol. This is our site furniture's palette. Our plant palette includes evergreen trees, undersory flowering trees, canning trees, and we have evergreen shrubs and deciduous shrubs, as well as perennials and grasses and ground covers. The perennials are trying to provide random colors that match our favorite colors. Our conceptual planting plan proposes, um, undersory trees to provide color and seasonality, and then propose evergreen shrubs to have green throughout the year while also including swaths of deciduous shrubs and perennials to add seasonality and color and texture. So for the fencing diagram, um, throughout the park, we're trying to lower the heights of fences wherever we can. So the fencing along the street side is four-foot height, and then throughout the rest of the playground, it'll be two-foot six for around the mytune beds. Around the basketball areas, we have 12-foot fences. And we have gates separating the walk-through from the activities in the multi-use playground, junior basketball, and the playground. And there's an existing fence between the nature site and our site that's six feet. This is our site in the east, providing solar interactions, lighting factors, cooking families. Fixing existing lights, proposing new park pandella lights, and also adding a new RKC for the state. Um, so for grid infrastructure, we're using a common, we're creating strategy that uses rain gardens and the permeable surfacing and under self-circu storm chambers to collect water. We're working with TEP to develop this. Um, so under the safety surface, we're proposing forest basketball to make that sustainable. So existing, the site is only 5% permeable, and we're proposing it be 36%.
Questions, comments?
I have some concern about, uh, I guess the items in part of the community seating area. It seems like there's a lot of barriers for people. Are there, like, is that much open space? And you can go back to the photographs.
Are the conditions better?
I think, there, sorry for that. It just feels like it's pretty tight back there, and I could imagine. I think the fence around it is probably what seems to me, feels like kind of entrapped. I wonder if there would be a way to open that up so people who feel like they can come to their, they're not already. Maybe if they're in another part of the park, I guess.
I can go back to the opening of that. There's two openings, um, here and here to the seating area, and there's another wide open round flagpole for the business connection between the two right here. Um, this space is eight feet wide between the benches and the tables. We wanted to have planting to create, like, a green buffer between the spaces, so it doesn't, to create more of like a room feel.
It has to be fenced in that way, because that's, it has to be, to me, like, a barrier. Eight feet is not that wide, right?
It'd be a size for the balcony.
So the planting would, the planting would make it if it didn't have a fence around it. But we found out we bring a lot of planting in our park, and it just doesn't survive.
How wide was that, did you think that, because it looks like it's the same width as the one that's at balcony, isn't it?
I think that one is, it's eight feet wide.
One of the challenges is, and you've heard me say this before, about, you know, plants in a cage. And, um, and because you're obviously trying to keep the planting low so that there's visibility into the sitting area, it makes the fence that much more apparent. And so I guess you're trying to make a street, which I appreciate, or a hallway, as you call it, which, um, is a lovely idea, and I saw a dog walking as part of the request, and so clearly that's another reason why fencing is needed around planting. I guess, I guess the question is whether there's a more effective way to increase the planting without, speak about the importance of the planting on the essentially south side of the seating area.
Um, that space was to create more of a buffer between the nature site and our site. There's, they have existing landscape bed here and existing fence. And so there's also a condition right here where they have a fence, and we have a wall, a football that we also have a fence on. We're proposing taking that fence down, putting planting, and then putting a fence here. So it's one, the solution to reduce the fencing and to sort of protect against that little drop in the wall, and it's also to get more room between the fence and the city and the nature site as a song.
How much buffering does that nature site really need? Is it, what's the, I mean, I see that they've got planting on the other side of that fence and lighting, and see how, how, how much buffering is needed there?
Um, I guess that is sort of subjective, but, um, there's also trying to break up the activity in a way so it's not so hidden, because, um, I can go back to the final thing.
Are you thinking that fences could go further back, because you've got that planting in front?
Yeah.
Keep the fence in front.
Yeah, keep planting along this, this hallway. I think that that's a consistent idea. Other products to re-design, and I think it's, it's good, but I'm just, I'm just wondering. But that may not be addressing your concern, right? Your concern is...
That does address part of it. I think it's, you know, gives people more space to, to, like, make you feel like you're actually in the whole, kind of, not...
I think we'd need to make these entrances wider.
Right. If you made the entrances wider, you pulled the benches back, then I think you begin to address some of what Hank suggested, because it feels too confined, it does, even in the rendering, it was tight.
What's their shape?
But general, I think, yeah, great.
Yeah, it's nice.
Those two, that little area, I was thinking, would I, would I ever want to go over there? I felt like I was kind of boxed in or something. You couldn't really necessarily see what was going to the side of it.
Just what everyone said, it would function more as what your event was, of the street, the hallway. It's a buffer, but it's a better buffer without the fence to the nature part of it. And there's too much of the, too frequently of separation of nature facilities and the others right nearby, and it seems that this would work better.
I do want to compliment you on your graphics. The plan is incredibly legible, uh, and the whole presentation, and I know I said this in the panel, but I really appreciate, um, Nancy, your efforts to make sure that all the presentations contain the same amount of, the same consistency.
God sent to us, I think. I look forward to the permeability slot. I can't wait.
That's so hugely important, and I specifically requested it. Excellent, okay. So we are voting, because this is a public hearing. Uh, so we obviously have a, uh, a comment that's been made. If everyone agrees, we would include that request as part of our vote. So can I ask someone to make a second? Okay, everyone in favor? Thank you very much, it's a privilege.
Ironically, the whole thing that seemed maybe you want to say, people who are store, who are doing it first time, and they're like, they're going to sign by music, but they're actually in one, which is one. That's what he, that's what he wants to do. And there's all these looking at, um, looking at their materials, looking at things like that are going out of the basketball courts and their material. They just think, kind of, like, this is their job.
They've graphic time.
Yeah, they have graphic time. But they got, they got that stuff, that's the one thing they've been really moving from the legislative administration to this administration. It looks like they put that stuff that's lying on, it just doesn't make any sense. Because it was actually, and it's cheaper. A lot of ground for them to report on.
We're actually planning it out. We're actually implementing it on one of our jobs. We are now moving on to item 2538-2, reconstruction of Lion Square Playground in Bronx. Let the record show that there are no accusations and no members of the public have signed up to testify. Per the standard procedure, the applicants will give their presentation, after which the commission will ask any questions, deliberate, and then vote. You want to ask?
Hi.
So another CPI project. Uh, this one is in Bronx. Okay, so this is Lion Square Park, which is a 1.38 site in the Bronx. It's a full block near to the Bruckner Expressway. And it's going to be completely reconstructed, sports, it's sports courts and playgrounds are the main issues here. So as you can see, the site is sort of in between, it's got Bruckner Boulevard and the elevated share of the expressway on the south, and we're in this residential neighborhood, but we've got a river here, but we're really not aware of that. It's kind of separated. It shows you some of the neighborhood playgrounds and parks that are nearby. Mostly small parks, basketball fields, community gardens, and we do have concrete park nearby here. Um, we are in a mostly residential neighborhood here. The area of Hunt's Point, which is directly to the south, south of Bruckner Boulevard, is in a way very physically separated from this site, it's the expressway. So you do have industrial stuff going on there, but we are really surrounded by the residential stuff. And you do have some light industrial, kind of like car repair shops on the back, but again, not really surrounding the park. And then we have a school right next door. The entrance to the school is actually not on the park side, it's on the other side, on the Ferris Street. Again, we're not in the park zone here. So this is the existing conditions. North is this way. It's surrounded by residential buildings, and the site is elevated from the street, mainly on these two sides. So at this north side, you meet the site at grade, but on the south and east side, we have a bank that slopes up and separates the park from the street below, which has some advantages and some disadvantages. It gives us a flat site, it gives us a sense of separation, but it also does have these banks that, um, that kind of, you know, stop you walking directly into the park. So right now, the way the park is used is there's a large basketball area that has two full courts, three half courts, and it's slightly depressed, it has a couple of steps down into it. And then there is a play area on the south side with some older playground and inhabited water spray beaches that don't really work. And there's a few benches, but that's really it. And there's quite a lot of mature trees here, mainly northern red oats down here, and then more sort of volunteer trees on some of the corners and stuff, but it's a quite nice little tree site. So this shows you the entrance from the southeast, uh, southwest, I'm sorry. This is the one they call an ADA entrance, but it really isn't at, it's in grade. And you see the Bruckner Expressway behind you. Um, this is the bank, and when you're looking up from the top there. Uh, this is the entrance on the northeast corner where it has stairs. But this sidewalk really serves as an ADA accessible group into the park. There wouldn't really be much advantage if you put a ramp here, because by the time you put a ramp in, you would be up at that same sidewalk area. So that would be kind of means you don't need that. People also use those stairs for exercise purposes. Uh, this is the northwest corner, so this is where you see the park at grade. It does have, of the, had an 80-style concrete walls around a lot of the stuff on the park. And you see the basketball courts inside it here. Again, the basketball courts, and this is the school on the east side, west side. These are play equipment, and you can see these sort of colored stuff in the background is the old play area. Uh, so right now, just as a brief site analysis, the basketball courts take up this whole central area. It's sort of sloping towards the middle. There's a strong diagonal axis of people walking across there. Uh, there is some noise from the expressway, and then people also told us there's noise from the basketball courts, generating a certain amount of noise. Um, the speaker slopes are on this side. There's not a big erosion problem, really, there's just a little bit of erosion frontier. There's quite a completed increase. Uh, our research is suggesting removing quite a few of the trees which are either in poor condition or volunteer species, but most of the big trees will stay in place. Um, so we had a good community scoping session with the public, um, and people were, obviously, they were into keeping the basketball courts, they wanted adult fitness. They were willing to give up some of the basketball courts. They said they didn't need as much basketball as they had. Uh, they did come up with some other ideas, fitness, track, water play, swings, yoga. That was kind of like, that's like we had the lanes, so I can't remember how serious the others were. Um, and they did, ping pong's came up. We can't fit all of this stuff into this park, and I think that was kind of understood when we went back to the community. Again, things like community gardens, there is community gardens very close by, so that wasn't something we felt we could fit. Dog park, I think, was kind of a response to people walking their dogs and not making up after them, which is really more of a, kind of an enforcement for just an issue, it's a different issue. Restroom, security, uh, and a lot of green space. So this park is getting a new restroom as a separate project, it's going to get a new comfort station. So this was the sort of bubble diagram concept plan that we came up with. So one of our goals here was, this is in South Bronx, very high asthma grade, right next to the, um, expressway. We thought that it would be best to try to move the children's play area as far away from the expressway as possible and bring that up to the north side of the site, where it's closer to the residential neighborhood and further away from, um, the noise and pollution of the expressway, even though it's not a huge move, I mean, some of those canning apples do stay, quote, "close to the source." So then we were suggesting that we can adopt fitness area into that area, figuring that, you know, a dog sort of fit for, presumably, children, hopefully, or at least for that man, you know, first, the best we could do. Um, so the basketball, which did take up this space, we're suggesting moving that slightly to the south to give us the space for the children's play area, and then locating the comfort station on the school side so that it was away from the surrounding residential buildings. And we were trying to make more of a green walk space through here, more of a garden field to the park, because people really did say that they wanted green space. We don't have space to be for a real lawn here, so we were thinking like a garden walk type, uh, feature. And this is the plan that we came up with. So we have this garden walk, this somewhat meanders through here with seating and planting beds that would have some of our ornamental plants in this area. We also added more planting on the street. So the comfort station is, as I said, located up there. It has a sort of four court of permeable paving which kind of defines that area and also will catch some splash from the drinking passes that are located on the front of the comfort station. So we have seating that kind of faces the planting and then also faces the more active areas. So we have two full basketball courts. These are existing trees that were to remain, they're undamaged trees. Everyone told us they did not, not... Everyone told us they did not like the depressed basketball courts, they wanted that brought up to grade. So we've kind of eliminated that change in grade so that it's more accessible. The play area is located up here to the north, and we have taken advantage of some of the grade change to make a little upper terrace in the play area so that this, the equipment is kind of accessible from this upper level seating area that looks out at the play area. So you can go up these ramps to that area, which is about three foot above the grade of the paving. Between the play area and the basketball courts, we have introduced a new planted area so that has seats that face either the courts or the playground, kind of defining the separation of that children's space, adult space, but giving you plenty of places to sit. And then within the adult fitness area, we also have seating along here and some game tables that we feel is kind of a good place for adult stuff. So if people are using the game tables, maybe they'll go and do something a little bit more active. We took the picnic area, moved here where we have a bit more space, and then we also have a ping pong table here to kind of encourage other types of activity and get people using the park in different space, in different ways. The slopes of the bank here will be planted. We're going to do kind of erosion control, introduce maybe some fire logs and try to put in some more plants that will really be mounting and ground up plants that will retain roots. And we say it's not a big erosion problem, but we could make it look more attractive in there. This is a slightly more close-up version, so you see the playground with terraces and the play equipment. There's a small water play area in the middle between the five to 12 equipment and the... Well, actually, it's all pretty five to 12 equipment. We have a top of, that we're doing with another park, just a couple of blocks up the street, long path, which I think you saw up in that one. So this is really for school which is. And you can see the, there's a lot of new seating. We made this entrance ramp really made it accessible, a lot more planted in the center of the park and adult fitness over here. This is section through the play area, so you can see it's the existing slope and we come down in here. So this is the new terrace, which will have a railing on it that also has like play features, so that that upper terrace becomes a bit of a play feature. So you've got wheelchair accessible kind of play rail really along there. And similarly, along the bottom, we have some more planted ground that will play with them. And then the basketball courts here are not entirely fenced in, they just have chain of fence behind the backstop, so the rest of the basketball courts are open, trying to minimize the fencing as much as possible. This is the grading plan. So as you can see, pretty steep around here, but mainly throughout towards the middle. And then we're going to be grading towards plant beds and doing the green infrastructure, which I think will work. So in terms of fencing, right now, there's no fencing around the edge of the park except for a little bit over here. So this is where there's not so much planting beds. So we are introducing low fencing around those planting beds, as Nancy said, we do need to protect any new planting. There hasn't been a problem along these two streets with people trying to walk up the slope ramping, so we figure that we don't really need any fencing along those edges. So really, we just have low fencing around the planting beds and then four foot high fencing in the playground area and also just defining the edge of adult fitness area, but not totally closing it. And then, as I said, the fencing behind the backstop, which will be chain of four foot high fencing. As far as paving, most of this is going to be asphalt paving. We are going to repave the streets with new concrete sidewalks, they're not in great condition. We do have concrete sidewalks here around the play area, and then some permeable paving in the center and the pass side for example with the comfort station. So just in terms of materials, this tan safety surface would be used at the adult fitness area, and then these three green colors will be used at the children's play area. And this is the permeable paving, which actually is a kind of a range of gray colors, which I think you'll see here. So typical paths, well, very rich, which are PL slats, the steel fence, but the picnic table, we're picking up a perforated metal, so it would be similar to this, like a gray color perforated metal table, which is very durable and goes in some issues with the PL slats on there. Sorry, that happens. Just turn that off. Okay. So the permeable paving, as you can see, there is actually a bit of a range to the color scheme in that new lighting will be different. There are picture, we have some bite cracks up at the sidewalk. The new drinking fountain is that tight edge, so that's two different heights for people who can't get their door very well, or people in wheelchairs, or people who have no problem at all. And then recycling containers. So for the sports courts, the basketball courts, we're proposing two colors of the color seal code, dark red and dark blue. The picnic table is this precast concrete picnic table that is the same one they have at Tockin Square Park and a few other parks in the city. So this is the adult fitness equipment, and then the children's play equipment is in the colors that are over there. And safety surface layout, so we're proposing a layout that uses like four foot squares. The safety surface basically comes in two sizes, four foot by four foot, two foot by two foot. We're going to do like a random pattern that mixes those shapes, so you can creating a little bit more interesting ground play area. And then color concrete paving, which would be used only at the water play area. And that's the ground sprays for the play equipment, and it's people property. So for the trees, there is quite a lot of, as I said, existing trees, red oats, honey herb, because we're going to be planting a lot of trees. I think we're proposing about 60 new trees, which includes shade trees and ornamental flowering trees. And then this would be our main sort of like wooden mentally planted area, and the other areas would be more just low maintenance shrubs and ground covers. These are some of the shade trees we're proposing, or these are the shade trees we're proposing, the flowering trees, the shrubs and perennials. We're trying to be as native as possible, so all of our plants are really native plants except for some of the plants that we proposed for the, for the banks, for the ground cover areas. So in terms of permeability, pathway, well, it was fairly permeable because we have, you know, these big edges. So we have gone from 24% to 38%. So we've introduced a lot more planting in the center instead of just all around the edges. And green infrastructure, as I said, we're going to be training mostly towards plant beds. We have some permeable paving, and then we will add like infiltration, an infiltration system under the basketball courts where we have space without trees to do that horizontal pipe onsite infiltration. And we're not picking up any water from the street in this project as opposed to most of the other projects, but on this project, everything is on the opposite side of the street, so DEP says that, you know, that we can't do it in this project. This is just to remind you of the comfort station, which you probably have already seen, or you will be seeing. So it's the sage and co-designed comfort station. I think the color hasn't totally been selected yet, but I'm sure that will be presented to you soon or already.
Are they coordinating with you on the color? Are they coordinating with you on the color?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So, and we, we did show this to the community board, and they were like, bluish, I think we like blue, so we'll see what color, you know, it comes up with.
I gotta look at that. Look at the safety surface, definitely from the color and the conversation, we'll get it off, we got that good look.
Right. I mean, I just, just a side note, is it looks like you're selecting an awful lot of colors to make gray. And you could use some of that blue maybe in this palette, I think.
That's right.
You're using a lot of colors to essentially make gray. If you look at these, these different materials on the table, they're all kind of gray. You're not looking to get other, and it seems like maybe a little contrast might be good.
Okay. Well, the play equipment is more in, you know, this blue range, the safety surface green, but we could definitely introduce blue color, that could be nice.
It's a story.
Yes, yes.
Any other comments? I had, I had a question. On Aldous Street, it appears that there's a planted strip along the curb, and at least in the photographs, it looked like there were some missing trees. Can you, as part of this project, include...
Yeah. We, I don't know if we want to speak to that, because we are including repaving and doing new street trees in this project. I'm not sure if it's going to be...
Right. We're either going to do it in this project or through our speaking to this ring. Yeah. So we're going to make sure all the trees fall.
And in fact, we would do more street replanting along all sides because we're doing the paving. We're basically looking to do either, either these three streets or even the whole site with new sidewalks and new...
And one last thing. Since the adult fitness area is not completely fenced, and the idea, I think, is just to sort of keep people from running into it, can that fence go down to two foot six?
Yeah, I think one of the issues might be, it could, do, I mean, two foot six, people are going to sit on it, it's not a good thing or a bad thing, it doesn't really matter. Maybe, I think the idea is just to define it, so I have no problem. I mean, we're doing, you know.
Yeah, I mean, just a, just a question.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we need the fence if it's that far away from the playground. We're doing other things to make it not look like playing, the safety surface, like that, that really depends, so.
We could do the two foot six.
Yeah. All right. So we'll, we'll just ask that that be a consideration.
Yeah.
And moving forward, any, any other questions? All right. Anything else you want to say? So, will someone make a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Would someone look at the color?
Would someone look at the color and the fence? So let the record show, all are in favor, and the project is approved with the conditions noted. The project is approved with the conditions noted.
Okay. Now, it seems to just say maybe green would be a nice color for the comfort station.
Yeah, I think that they should look at the proportion of the colors in the playground with the comfort station. I think it sounds like they're not...
Make a look at it.
Yeah, that's all the... Thank you.
Right, so now we're moving on to the consent agenda. So we have items 2533 to 2543. Please note the conditions of approval as recommended by the various committees. Stat has noted no recusals. It's unfeasible. Are there any recusals that are not noted? For the record, no members of the public have signed up to testify on any of the consent items. Is anyone who just walked in wish to testify? Let the record show, no one wishes to testify. Will someone make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
As soon as...
A second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Let the record show, all are in favor, and the consent agenda is approved with the conditions noted. The public meeting is now adjourned. On time.